Well, good morning. Today's the twenty-sixth day of April. Time is nine oh seven. Uh, the Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct its, uh, weekly business meeting. Uh, all three commissioners are present. I'm gonna ask you to introduce yourself for the record, starting over here.
Dawn Bridge, clerk's office.
Ellen Swain, procurement.
Alyssa Allington, procurement.
Jennifer Ray, domestic violence, program four leader.
Dylan Orton, family court services, program manager.
Lauren Lynch, WCA.
Marilyn Lobel, family court services specialist.
Taryn Robbins, state court advocate manager of WCA.
Bree Young, life and P manager of WCA.
Actually, we're prosecutor's office.
Matthew Erdly, COO of the WCA.
Jan Bennett, Ada County Prosecutor.
Steve Rutherford, your office.
Barry Luterman.
Okay, IT guy.
Elizabeth Duncan, communications.
Okay.
Beth Ma, treasurer.
Trail triple county clerk.
Well, good. We're ready to go. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there is one.
Okay. Uh, we'll, we'll accept a motion to, uh, add, add an item to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda to add item four.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay, uh, first up on the agenda is a proclamation. I'm gonna ask, uh, could you read the proclamation? Go ahead.
Denim Day for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the Women's and Children's Alliance has declared April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three as Denim Day, and whereas both events are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault remain a serious issue in our society, and whereas harmful attitudes about sexual assault allow these crimes to persist and allow survivors to be pre-victimized, and whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were also instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and, whereas every sixty-eight seconds, someone in, someone in America is sexually assaulted, and approximately one in six women are raped during their lifetimes, and whereas with proper education on the matter, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing incidence of this alarming and psychologically damaging crime, and whereas Ada County is an important partner in the efforts of the WCA, Women and Children's Alliance, to educate about the true impact of rape and sexual assault, now therefore be it resolved at the Board of Ada County Commissioners to hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three as Denim Day for Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the County of Ada, and encourage all citizens to speak out against sexual assault and support local efforts to provide help and healing to victims of these crimes.
Okay. We've, uh, heard the proclamation. We'll accept a motion now to pass the proclamation.
I move we pass this proclamation.
Is there a second to the motion?
All right, I will second that.
Okay, any, any, any discussion or any to add to it?
Do you want to hear from anybody in the crowd today?
Uh, good, good. If you want to speak to it before we pass the proclamation. Go ahead, sure.
Um, I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity for us to be here and putting sexual assault awareness and standing as well there to assist survivors at the forefront of this community, and for anyone who is in their services experiencing sexual assault, or knows someone who has, our doors of the WCA are always open, so we appreciate you doing this and being here.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to, wish to say anything before we proceed?
Mr. Chairman, briefly, Jan Bennett, Ada County Prosecutor, I just want to thank you all for your support of the services for, um, victims of sexual assault. I appreciate that the, uh, Commission has always been supportive of prevention and awareness and, um, obviously support our office in handling those cases come to us, so thank you very much for doing the proclamation today.
Great, thank you. Should be noted, this is my denim. Anything, anybody else want to say anything before we, if not, we'll, uh, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the, uh, proclamation as, as has been read, uh, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Proclamation carries. Now, before we gather for a photo, we'd like to, uh, again, welcome, uh, our guests here today for the Denim Day, uh, the Representative of Women's and Children's Alliance, WCA, Matthew Erdly, and, uh, Bree Young, and Taryn Robbins. Yes. We, our appreciation also to the Ada County staff who are part of Family Court and Domestic Violence Court, specifically, uh, Jennifer Ray and her colleagues who have been advocates for this event each year. Thank you for coming all out. Now, let's go take a picture. Okay.
Just line you up in front of the guide right here and crunch you all in. I'll just move some of the furniture.
Come on in, come on in.
Who wants to get this? Oh, you sure you want that? Yeah. All right. All right. I'll go. I wore all my denim stuff today. Yeah, you're full denim. Get it front, get it front.
I don't know, I might block.
Okay.
Oh. So we're gonna fit everybody in a picture. It's way too wide, so there'd be.
Okay. You're good, yeah.
We should have got a lot smaller.
There you go.
Come on, guys, down. Oh, that's funny.
There you go.
Right in front of you, so, okay, we have everybody there. Nice smiles. Very good, and more. Tom, do you mind getting him right here? I can, I can squeeze it. There we go, there we go. That's even better. Thank you so much. Just hope some of you can make smiles.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, thank you.
Thanks for coming, good to see you. We're silent. Thank you for coming, we appreciate that you're here.
Okay. Next up, we have unfinished business. Uh, I would accept a motion to remove unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration and move the procurement items to the end of the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, uh, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, first up is, uh, Development Services, uh, Valer Timman, Evan, appeal and approval of a conditional use and master site plan for public, quasi-public use associated with renewable natural gas injection site for the Northwest Pipeline Corporation, properties located near the intersection of West Kinnamora Road and South Pleasant Valley Road. And contains three hundred and nine point two-five acres in a rural preservation district. Actually, do you want to give us an idea?
Uh, only if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
You, um, directed staff to, uh, do some amended conditions for approval on this, um, particular use, and so, uh, I think it's in front of you now to make a, uh, motion to, uh, whichever way you want to go, approve the appeal, um, and, uh, directs, and then have the amended conditions as, um, you directed staff to write.
Right, and we had, we after had two, we had two appeals that we had, we have the, the applicant, go ahead.
Sorry, Chairman, no, there was only one appeal by the, uh, neighborhood group to the east of the project.
I thought the application, the applicant was wanting to appeal to remove one of the items.
They requested through the appeal process to have one of the conditions, uh, struck, but they accepted four other conditions that were kind of requested and tailored, or I guess tailored after the requests of the neighborhood. And again, those are, uh, in the conditions of approval, number three was, was struck, which was to create fencing that covers light and sound mitigation, and then four through seven, I can just read these into the record, I guess, since they're already here. Uh, condition four is deliveries to the site are limited to no more than five per day. Uh, number five, hours of operation for the compressor associated with the operations will be limited to seven AM to seven PM. Number six, the applicant shall incorporate into the project recommendations made by the Idaho State Fire Marshal per the memo dated April fifth, two thousand twenty-three, and include as an exhibit. And then finally, uh, two years from the commencement of the use, the director shall conduct a review of the project to determine compliance with the board's decision. So those are, those are the changes to the conditions that, uh, were requested.
Two years was from commencement of the opera.
Commencement of the use, yeah.
That could be a while.
Yeah.
All right.
Have we heard, uh, from either party? Any issues, or has any reconsideration been filed?
Uh, Chairman, Commissioner, probably don't want to add to the record, but I think, um, everything, everyone seems happy with these conditions, so.
Reconsideration will only come after you make a decision today, if somebody's not happy.
That's what they reconsider is, this decision.
Correct.
Okay, so I guess, I guess based, summary then is, April twelfth, we were considering an appeal.
Correct.
Correct, and then with some conditions, we amended those conditions, and that's what we're deciding right now is to agree with the appeal with amended conditions, or what, that's my question.
Actually.
We're moving to approve the projects.
Actually, here you can, you can, you can approve the appeal, that's kind of, I think your motion is, because you agree that the, some of the conditions imposed by the planning zoning commission, uh, probably need to be amended in order to minimize any potential impacts the project may have on the neighbors.
Okay, and that's what the motion is.
That's correct, and so I kind of stated your motion, because I think that's where you were going.
Yeah.
And if you wanted to say that's the motion and.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, um, I'll move to, uh, approve project number two zero two, two zero two, seven seven eight A. And the findings of fact and conclusions of law with the understanding that this, with this motion, the board is approving the use as set forth in project number two zero two, two zero two, seven seven eight CU dash MSP, subject to the amended conditions and approval as attached by, uh, as attached as exhibit A to the board's finding of fact and conclusions of law.
I second the motion. All right?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I think we gave this a really thorough hearing. We heard from both sides, and we had a nice, long debate, went back and forth on all the, the different conditions. I think should be noted that the, um, the appellants were not contesting approval of this project, but only the conditions. So I think after, uh, hearing for both sides, we tailored a, a good, uh, solution that hopefully both sides can be comfortable with.
Oh, I think so. All right, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have, uh, procurement.
Oh, we're moving that to the end.
Oh, we moved that to the end? All right, all right, we'll move, we'll move along then. All right, uh, we have, uh, I'll open the, uh, public hearing on resolution number two eight six one on ARPA, ARPA resolution number twenty-eight. Is there discussion?
I can't, this is live. Couple notes.
Okay.
Anyway. So this was just for the juvenile services recreation yard. Um, there was quite a delay from the time it was approved last March, twenty twenty-two until bid, so there has been substantial cost increase, labor increases, so that has brought us the need to increase the original award by six hundred and twenty-one, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, um, for a total award of one million, eight hundred and eight, seven hundred and forty-seven.
All right, well, thank you. And for anything else to add to the, uh, discussion? If not, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two eight six one. As for, for the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution two eight six one, as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've written motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we have, uh, operations with change order, number one, bar, park pathways, bridges, agreement number one, four, six, three, seven. Uh, looks like we're gonna decrease it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner BS, uh, we, uh, have wrapped up the project. All the pathways are in place. It's a beautiful project, new bridges, new, uh, over the entire scope of the project, uh, new pathways out in front of the float area, and the fishing pier, which is holding up great in this high water, I must add, and, uh.
So far.
Yeah. All said and done, though, we wrapped up, there was, uh, remaining fifteen thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-six cents that we're returning, um, and that was ARPA funds, so, uh, I don't know how that works beyond this when it goes back into the ARPA.
Yep. Okay, uh, is there a motion on this change order?
Now, Mr. Chair, I move to approve change order number one, as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion carries, thank you. Now, we have licenses. We have, uh, catering, no, we have catering permit first, excuse me, catering permit. I've already signed it, but we need to pass, uh, pass a motion here.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and ratify the catering permit previously signed by Commissioner Beck on four twenty, twenty twenty-three, as identified on the agenda, and approve the remaining licenses as listed on the agenda, including three catering permits, three new licenses, three license transfers, sixty license renewals, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion carries. All right, now we have our denim clad clerk with us today. For Denim Day.
Nothing really to report, Mr. Chair, and Commissioners Samuel, we've been doing for the last several weeks, and will be doing for the next many weeks, uh, elections and budget, uh, as well as helping out with court, so, uh, nothing new, other than lots of new and exciting ideas for transportation, ideas for the valley over the last couple days.
We did get some of those.
At the conference, but, uh, no, nothing else to share, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have claims journal. I'll accept a motion on the claims journal.
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the claims journal as dated April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
We have personnel actions. I'll accept a motion on the personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and the summary sheet remained on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Now, do we have anyone from the Sessions Office here? I don't think so. All right. Moving on, we have the Treasurers' Office right here. We have, uh, our distinguished treasurer with us.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Um, our priority right now is preparing for the second half twenty twenty-two reminder notices, um, so we'll be mailing those in a few weeks. Um, this is no surprise to anyone, because these were the tax bills that we created last November, um, so there's, there's no new math on this for the taxpayer, it's just letting them know the balance that will be due by the June twentieth due date, so. So we have a few absences, um, just because, um, we go into a blackout period here in a few weeks, so, so we can be fully staffed for our collections. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next up is approval of our minutes, uh, for three twenty twenty-three. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have some, uh, interim events and, uh, commercial exhibitor and concession agreements for the Expo Idaho. Any discussion or, uh, comments, anything on any of these? No, I'll accept the motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve one interim event agreement, twenty-one commercial exhibitor agreements, and two concessionaire agreements, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we have five agreements. Uh, is there, uh, any discussion on any of these agreements?
Scott, did you have any comment on these?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, I do not. No, business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and ratify the four agreements signed by Commissioner Beck on four twenty twenty-three and approve agreements, number fifteen, one thirty-one, one twenty-three, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
All right, next up, we have the weekly indigent items. I'll accept a motion on the weekly indigent items.
I move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have, uh, miscellaneous stipulation and agreement for partial lump sum settlement. I'll accept a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the stipulation and agreement on partial lump sum settlement for case number IC twenty twenty-one dash zero six four nine five.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion carries. All right, and now we have procurement.
Hello. Hi, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, so the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for bid two three zero three eight, um, but we would like to request additional time to review the bids and request this, that this bid re, be re-tabled, sorry, for May second for further consideration.
Okay, is there a motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll move to, um, table, um, award of bid number two three zero three eight, Ada County Public Safety Complex penthouse heating boilers one and two, and PSP chiller twenty twenty-three to May.
Second?
Second.
Second, twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up, award of bid number two three zero four zero.
All right, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for bid two three zero four zero, and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration. Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please read the letter for the record.
All right, dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it's rec, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two three zero four zero to ACO Engineering Systems as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount plus additive alternate in the amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid twenty three zero four zero, Ada County Juvenile Services RTU replacement, twenty twenty-three, to ACO Engineering Systems.
ACO, I think.
ACO, in the amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Motion carries. All right, next up, we have the award of bid of two three zero four two.
Yes, all right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for bid two three zero four two, and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration. Would you like me to read this one?
Read it.
So, dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two three zero four two to Brycon Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of one million, six hundred forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
This is where we had to increase the.
Yep.
Exactly.
All right, is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid two three zero four two, ARPA Ada County Juvenile Services Outdoor Recreation Structure to Brycon Incorporated in the amount of one million, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. I second the motion.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Is there any more business you can prop forward to the board for this open business meeting? Hearing none, we're in recess.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, today is the twenty-sixth day of April, uh, it's nine thirty, the Board of Commissioners, sitting as a, sitting as the Board of Emergency Medical Services District is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Madam Clerk, are there, all three commissioners are present? Also, we have with us for the record.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
Over here.
Free Commissioner's Office, Larry Luterman.
Larry Luterman, and IT guy. Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
There are not.
Okay, um, under new business, we'll, 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 uh, take up claims journal. Is there a motion on the claims journal?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of the claims as listed on the claims journal dated April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, three regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Uh, next up, uh, motion carries. Next up, I'll take personnel actions. Uh, I'll accept a motion on the personnel actions.
I move to approve personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remained on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye? You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Carries. We have two, we have two agreements now, uh, between Ada County Medical Services and the City of Meridian for station number seven co-location. And agreement between Ada County and, uh, Meridian number eight co-location. Is there any questions or updates on the agreements?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any updates.
Okay, I'll accept a motion and approve these two agreements.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the two agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay, we have now EMS update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. I have a quick update today. Uh, COVID numbers still sitting at three point five. You've probably heard of the new variant, Arcturus. Um, has a new symptom, which is kind of like, uh, red eye, like pink eye kind of a symptom that goes along with it, which is perfect timing in the spring.
I know somebody who got that then.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lost her smell and describing pink eyes.
Wow, okay, okay. I haven't, I haven't known anybody that had it yet, so it's here, apparently. Was that here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty mild overall.
Okay, good, good. Um, outside of that, uh, we, uh, the rest of my team is down working on, uh, the finalization of our mass casualty incident plan. Um, it's, uh, not been updated since two thousand, so that's, uh, something that's been long overdue, and we're getting that put together so that we've got a good plan for the county. But, um, outside of that, that's, uh, really all I have to do, kind of a short update.
Any questions? Well, good. Short update, you're always good with EMS.
Yes, those are the best.
They are.
Right. All right, thank you. We'll be in recess. Thank you.